Saturday is the Bridge to the Community Run. It's our fourth one that we've done. We're proud of that event. It brings a lot of people down to our riverfront. We're proud of our riverfront. It looks great. New Holiday Inn there and a lot that's going on there. So, this is our opportunity to bring people down and showcase it. We start the run there. We run down along the road. I have been over to see the owner of the Holiday Inn or the manager. Visit with her a little bit about the project. And we run down the road. We cross the bridge. We come back into -- go across to Sterling and come back into Rock Falls. It's a 5K and a 10K. We start the day off with a children's run on the First Avenue Bridge with some mascots. So, and with the money, we're able to put up some artistic banners on the First Avenue Bridge and we're proud of that also. So, I'm here to request the use of the slab. We did put in the event permit and that went in a little late. I wish it had gotten in sooner, but I've lost a good aide of mine that did a lot of this stuff for me. Gaila Cole was just a terrific supporter of this and still is, but she's not quite as close to my office now. So, I've found that I have to pick up some of these loose ends and I'm not a good detail person. So, I'm here kind of a late notice. But it'd be this Saturday and so I'd like to ask for the opportunity to use that slab for this Saturday's Bridge to the Community Run.
Do you need electricity there, Jack?
We do need electricity there, yes.
Do you need water there?
Do not need water. And I'd like to thank Bill for all the work he does. Bill gets out and kind of sprays out our route for us and does a lot of preparatory work. So, it's nice to have the mayor of Rock Falls support this with his volunteer work too. So, thank you, Bill.
Mr. Reitzel? Make a motion to approve the use of the slab and waive the requirement for electricity charges.
Second.
Mr. Logan, motion has been made and seconded. To approve the request by Mr. Spencer and the Bridge to the Community Group for the use of the slab on the riverfront and for the connection of electricity and to waive that at the feet. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye?
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Community Affairs, no one here? The consent agenda. Anybody on the council have any items they'd like to remove for individual consideration before we go with the consent agenda as presented? Mr. Clerk.
Approval of amendments of the August 16th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the bills as presented and approval of the requests of the Rock Falls High School for the annual homecoming parade on September 22nd, 2016 at 5:30 PM.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further questions? Attorney Nunn, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye?
Thank you. Next item is ordinances for first reading. We have three ordinances for first reading. Is there a request from anyone on the council for the removal of any of them prior to that approval?
Yes, number two.
Mr. Kuhlmeier is requesting that number two ordinance 2016-2282 be handled separately. Is that correct, sir? All right. Any other requests? Mr. Clerk, if you would, item one and three.
Approval of ordinance 2016-2281, amending Chapter 6, Article 3, Division 1, Section 6-79, insurance requirements for contractors in the city. And approval of ordinance 2016-2283, amending Section 32-132A, accepting wastewater from private septic or sewage systems.
Make a motion to approve both ordinances as read. 20281 and 20283, second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Reitzel to approve ordinances for first reading only. Number one ordinance 2016-2281 and item number three ordinance 2016-2283. Further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Item one and three are approved for first reading only. Sir, number two, please.
Approval of ordinance 2016-2282, amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 2, Section 2-198, compensation for city clerk.
Chair to entertain a motion?
Throw move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Reitzel for the approval of ordinance 2016-2282 and at the request of Mr. Kuhlmeier. Okay, roll call, both, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
No.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Six aye?
Thank you. Motion carries. All three will be sent on for ordinance second reading adoption. We have one item this evening. Sir, please for second reading and adoption.
Adoption of ordinance 2016-2284, amending Chapter 1, Article 2, Division 1, Section 1-41, reducing fines for certain cannabis and cannabis paraphernalia offenses.
Make a motion to approve 2016-2284 for second reading.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman for the second reading and adoption of ordinance 2016-2284. Any further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye?
Robin, City Administrator, Court, please.
We have the write-offs to present. Utility Superintendent is required to produce these every six months. However, she's trying to do it quarterly and right now, we're just in an effort to try to clean up the books. These were recommended for passage by the entire council for -- by the Electric and Finance Committees and the amount of the write-offs totals $28,440.74.
I'd make the motion to approve the write-offs of 28,440.74.
Second motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Logan, seconded by Mr. Shuneman to approve item one, write-offs from the Electric and Finance Committee recordations in the amount of $28,440.74. Is there any questions? I want to thank both committees for reviewing this data and presenting this to the council. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye?
Uh, next, Your Honor, I have the -- we need a drum roll for this one. This is actually the intergovernmental agreement that we've been waiting for from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for our funds, which are actually federal funds that are coming to us for the demolition associated with the assessment of the limestone building.
I'm moved.
This -- no, it's okay. This is the draft. So, what I would like to have the council approve is this draft version and approve the intergovernment agreement in its entirety with our city attorney's approval of the final draft.
I'll move for the approval of the draft version with the city attorney's review of the final draft of the agreement.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Logan to approve the draft version that you have in your possession. And the final version will be reviewed and subject to the city attorney's review and approval before the mayor and the city clerk sign. Under discussion, I would like, Robin, would you please share the news about how much we're getting and the better news about the grant side of it that we really didn't see coming?
Initially, we were asking for $150,000. This was really between talks that we'd had over the past couple of years with Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. And of course, those funds would be repayable upon the development of that site if it were to be developed. When we had to start the application process from scratch, Terricon, I'll give credit where credit is due, Terricon said, "Well, heck, if we're gonna go through all this, let's ask for $300,000." So, they did the application for $300,000 and the way that $300,000 is broke up is $200,000 is grant money and it is not -- we do not have to repay that money. And the $100,000 does have to be repaid if we spend that money. Right now, the last -- the quote that we received for demolition of the building was $160,000. I believe it will be slightly over that amount, but the grant should take care of all the excess funds that we need for the demolition.
Great. Mr. Clerk?
In reading this agreement, that was one area that I didn't read over, I didn't see about the repayment.
Right. It states $300,000. They give that to us. When they give you the money in the revolving loan funds, it's not broke out. When you do your application is where you break out that money. You actually, in the application, ask for so much in grant, so much in loan. And that's where we ask for -- that's where they come up with the $300,000.
But that isn't part of our agreement that we're looking at now?
Nope. And we don't have to worry about that. It'll revert back to what we ask for when we go to repayment. And they've been very good with working with us. We just set up -- has it been two years ago now that we did the repayment? Set up the repayment plan for the RLF that we did then and we were able to knock that down, I believe, 30 to 40 percent. We knocked that revolving loan fund down that we had to pay down and pay it in three years. And then, of course, we asked them to do away with the payment this year since they've been holding back this money from us and we're not -- we don't have to make our payment this year. So, they're really good to work with on their repayments. And any of the money, even if it is an RLF, you don't have to pay that back. It goes away after 20 years if the land is never developed. So, you only pay it back once you've actually developed the land again to where it comes back on the tax rolls.
So, if we're able to complete this project for under $200,000, as is our thinking that's gonna happen, we will have no repayment requirements whatsoever. And the assessment and this $200,000 together will allow us to achieve our goal to get it in place. Additional questions? Anybody may have a question, Robin?
The only thing is, it does give us a low flexibility if something's found that we weren't anticipating, right?
And you have to remember too, this is the assessment part of it. If there is actual remediation that will need to be done, we can apply for further grants to actually address any remediation cleanup that needs to be done if they find it substantial.
Are we going to really find out what this project is going to encompass? I know I asked earlier on when Terricon had this and it was kind of a -- not really know. I don't know what the scope of this project is going to involve.
The scope of what Terricon's assessment is? I mean, is that what you're asking? Because what it is, they'll go in -- there are certain places in that that they found historically that will be more apt to be contaminated, such as the paint room. I believe there was another location too of that because of the historical use of the building, there's hot zones that if there's gonna be contamination, that's where they're gonna find it. But they'll still do the same thing. They'll still do the soil borings and groundwater testing and they'll do all the initial testing to assess the site as a whole. The problem is, is that they can't get to those sites because of the condition of the building. So, that's why the US EPA did something very rare and said, "You can use our assessment grant to do demolition of the building because you can't even assess any contamination that may be found there with the building in that condition." So, they're gonna do just standard assessment testing, which is soil boring, groundwater, especially in the hot spots such as the paint room.
I guess what I'm saying though is that Terricon put the bids out and that's just push the building over or what are we getting?
Oh, no, no. Oh, on the demolition?
Yeah.
Those -- I have specific bid specs if you want to see those. There were specific bid specs that were done in conjunction. I worked on them and Mark Serien worked on them as far as like how the sides, because that building--
Can you briefly describe what that's gonna be? I mean, it's gonna be--
Sure. They're gonna knock down the building. Then you're gonna have that inlet that is going to, you know, where it's carved into the hill. It's built into the hill. Those are gonna be sloped down slightly, try to get those at the best angle that we can. But then the -- that's all we're gonna do with it at this time and it'll probably be fenced off or guardrails at the top.
Well, it won't be like filled with dirt?
No.
Like planted or anything like that?
No. We're gonna try to slope that as best we can, but we have no intentions of filling that in right now.
And when they do that, they'll take all their samples and stuff and then report on that once that's all done?
Our biggest concern was getting those sides sloped as best we can, so. And I don't have a timeframe yet. Brendan from Terricon is the one that's in direct communication with Green Construction, which is who was awarded the bid by Terricon for construction or demolition of this. And we'll have to work with their schedule now since we're months behind where we thought we would be, so. As soon as I know a timeframe, I will shoot out an email to everybody and let them know.
Any other questions, gentlemen? If not, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Ms. Logan to go ahead with the draft approval of the EPA intergovernmental agreement to be reviewed by the city attorney prior to his signatures. If there's no further discussion, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Rescues, please.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Six aye?
Thank you.
Then I just thought I'd give you guys a brief update. The -- on the bond issue, the $2 million bond issue, the bonds were offered last week. I think it was last week. Last week, so we were happy with how that came out. We have a final payment schedule with that. The highest payment that we have in the 18 years of payment is $148 -- $148,000, sorry. Wishful thinking there. The average payment is around $146,000 a year. So, I was real pleased with how the bond offering went. That will close next Thursday, I believe it is, or Friday, the 16th. Thursday closes next week. So--
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. It actually closes on the sale. And yes, one of our local banks was the major purchaser of those bonds. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that, that that has gone through. And I believe that's all I have except woo-hoo. When's the last time Rock Falls went into a football season 2-0? Sorry, Jim stole your thunder.
There you go. Stole my thunder.
I remember when we did it.
I was back in the lower realm of things. Exactly.
Anybody have any questions for Robin? Thank you, Robin. Information reporter's findings, Mr. Argini. Anything from your office tonight, sir?
No, I just wanted to let the family of Carol Fitzgerald know that our -- the city's thoughts are with them. And she was on the Police Fire Commission and I was with her on that and she was a very upstanding citizen. We really miss her.
Thank you. Mr. Reese, you have something to share with us?
Yes, I do. As you are all aware, there have been ongoing problems with discharge into the sewer system from Civic Plaza 1 or Civic Plaza 2 over the last several months that have been causing problems with the sewer system. Civic Plaza 1 has agreed to install a sewage grinder to eliminate the potential for clogging to occur from discharge from that facility. Ed has been in almost constant contact with the persons in ownership of Civic Plaza 2, asking them to do the same thing. They had said that they would proceed to get that done. However, there's been no communication with them for about three weeks, maybe a little bit more over that. And because of the fact of the risk to the system and for continued or additional blockages to occur, causing sewage backups in private homes in the area, and because of the inaction that apparently is emanating from the owners of Civic Plaza 2, we have prepared and are planning to file tomorrow, unless you tell us by motion to not do that, a lawsuit seeking an injunction against the owners of Civic Plaza 2, asking the court to order them to install the sewage grinding facilities at there to prevent future blockages. We'll be going into court asking for a preliminary injunction and making it permanent. And upon failure of them to do that, for the court to fine them for each day of a violation that continues on and to also order them to pay the cost that the city might incur to install a sewage grinding type equipment in there. If you don't think we ought to do that, then a motion would be in order telling us not to do it. But Ed has already signed that. He's the head of the department and it's his obligation under the ordinance of the city to assure that the sewage system operates properly and that we do not have blockages that cause backups and sewage discharge into private residences. And so, based upon his information and other engineering data that we've gotten, that's what we plan to do.
Any questions? I don't need a motion telling me to do it. I need a -- if you don't want me to do it, I need a motion to that, okay? Otherwise, it's gonna get filed. Any questions anybody might have on Mr. Reese?
No, but I think it's of note to again thank Whiteside County Housing Authority and especially Lynn Dieter, who has had to go through a tremendous amount of bureaucracy to get it done for Civic Plaza 1 as quickly as she has had to do. Not only did they not have the money in the budget, she was able to acquire the funds to do it, get engineering, but it's a tremendous amount of red tape that she went through and she did it very expediently. And the city just really appreciates how compliant that the Whiteside County Housing Authority has been with us.
And just so everybody's aware, there isn't anything in this lawsuit that would in any way, shape, or form result in termination of water or sewer service to the building for the residents. They're not in jeopardy of any loss of services from this. This is strictly a lawsuit asking a court to order the owners of the building and the property to do the things that the city's ordinances require them to do and which the housing authority is doing on its own voluntarily.
I assume that there would be asked for some type of a time schedule that this would be done or?
We're gonna ask for preliminary injunction, which is as soon as we can get into court to get court time to ask the court for that, we have to obviously give notice to the owners of the filing of the lawsuit. And so, it just depends a little bit upon the court's schedule and how rapidly we can get things heard. Can't really give you a timetable at this point as to when it would be done, but we'll certainly be pressing for early resolution of these things simply because of the almost emergency nature of what's happening.
The owners of both Civic Plaza 1 and Civic Plaza 2 were given a schedule that they had to hit certain landmarks by. And I believe the last deadline for compliance was, what was the date?
The final deadline, September 1st.
Yeah, September 1st was the final deadline, but because there had been no communications or responding by return receipt as we had requested, they've not been compliant with the timeline that we gave them to hit the landmarks. We've had sit-down conversations with them. This hasn't been done. I mean, this was initiated face-to-face.
Hearing nothing from the council, the chair will assume that the council is supportive of this and will take no action. Please proceed, sir. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you. Mr. Frickenstein?
I'll be tonight, Robin.
Mr. Cox?
I'll be tonight, sir.
Dick?
Nothing, sir.
Chief Nelson?
I'm on my way.
Chief Cook?
I'm on my way.
Mr. Serien's gone. It is with great amount of pleasure that I introduce Mr. Larry Spade.
I need the approval of two new garage doors for the street department. They are deteriorating to the point where there's more water running in than flowing out. So, I'm here to get your guys' approval for the replacement of two doors.
These were in the budget under building repair and maintenance, but I can authorize this size purchase.
I'll make a motion to--
This will be in the $12,545?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to--
That's for both man orders.
-- the expenditure of $12,545.25 for the purchase of two new garage doors for the street department.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Reitzel to approve the request for two garage doors at $12,545.25.
Why do we have two tactical openers on there? One area of roof leaks and one area of--
Yeah. No, one is where we work the trucks at and that was one of the reasons. It's just got so rusty over the years. This other one's supposed to be totally enclosed, so when we spray the salt off the trucks, it won't deteriorate the opener. We've had them actually eat the chains and drop the door, which is quite nasty.
Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye?
I'll get him ordered. Thank you.
See how easy that was?
I'll do that.
Yes.
Mr. Peddell?
Yes, Your Honor. I have three items tonight. First one was to fast track through Will and Hoffman at the end of the last week. It's a change order for the Well 7 project for the Skate upgrade, taking everything that had labeled Well 4 to change it to Well 7. So, that's a change order of $5,680.50 through Skate Systems or Skate Provider.
I'll make that motion. Mr. Reitzel makes the motion to approve at 568050.
Second.
Mr. Logan. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Hogan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye?
The next two items did go through Public Works. The first one was the red light on top of the green tower has failed and the light bulbs that we used to use are no longer used. We can't get them. So, this is a request for $7,720 for complete electric contractors to install.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Reitzel for the approval, the request for new lights in the green water tower from complete electric in the amount of $7,720. I'm assuming this is for all-new wiring and all-new everything?
Just the fixtures upgrade, all wiring going from the bottom of the tower up is all the same.
Yeah, hopefully it wasn't just one light bulb.
It is the green tower, not the green water.
Correct.
Okay.
The green water tower. And next year, we will have to do the same thing to the other tower.